We're going to start with a educational focus presentation by Mary's study. Starting?
Sure.
Yeah, so good evening. Whatever you want.
Nobody knows.
So Judy and I are gonna, we're gonna talk to her a little bit, pulling together. Just kind of our data report, annual data report that happens. I know, I know last year I was here for the AP capacity. Mr. Pribernow had presented as well, so we talked as an administrative team and started to pull some data together again. Be able to kind of share out the progress since last year and kind of give the board kind of an overview of different scores. Kind of how the tests are as we kind of go throughout the packet. So the book itself, it kind of really folds open versus flips open in terms of as you read it. And the big thing, I think, you know, as an administrative team and as a school that we want to look at as, and remember as we go through this, you know, there's. Achievement data that's in here about how our kids are performing on. The tests that we give, both New Hampshire SAS, which is a statewide assessment, as well as the NWEA. Which is a district assessment that's actually given in lots of schools across the country. We also look at the growth of how our kids are doing because whether or not they're at, you know, considered a proficient level or at grade level. It's also about how much they grow throughout the course of a year. So even if they're above grade, grade level, we want them growing as students and achieve, in achievement as well as if they are below grade level. And then that helps us kind of reflect how we kind of do business, things that we need to change and informs us about next step. So I'm going to hand it off to Dr. McGann for the first couple of pages.
Okay, so the first couple of pages is based on the, just information on the entire district. So the, the first page is just your, you know, the population and what that looks like, your enrollment. And, you know, male, female, that type of thing, student population breakdown, that's what that first page is about. The next page gets into your student achievement, your educated profile, your school environment. Yeah, finance, the academic growth and college and career readiness. In the gray areas, there's a little, a key right there, and that's just 50% right on average, along with everybody. A lot of the other schools in the state. And the proficiency, this is the total population of the student scores in each of the areas. So your total population K through 12, for ELA, it's 60%. And your total population for math is at 53%, in science is proficiency is 31%. Just goes into the profiles of your, your district. And your, uh, school environment, your, your blue is your top, go ahead.
Just sort of in that, that first column there, everything's gray, right? So that means.
That's good.
That although we are only reaching 31% efficiency in science, that is consistent with the middle 50% of schools in the state.
Correct.
Because that was one of the questions that we've always been trying to struggle to get an answer with is like. What's considered a good proficiency rate or what's considered an acceptable proficiency rate for a school? I don't think we've ever really got a clear answer, but it sounds like while that sounds low, that's the, that's what the, what, that's what is typical for schools.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And then the last, the school environment, when you're getting into the blues, that's a top 25%, which is good, okay? The only, so school suspension rate is, is, you know, we're low, so that's good. Um, out of school suspension rate is, is pretty good. Uh, within the average range of, of the schools across the state. The only thing that looks a little different is your incidence of violence, that's good, that's zero. But it comes in at the lower 25%, so what they did was they, they put. That's a lower number, but it really should be at the high.
Yeah, yeah.
Didn't negative, they said, so kind of, kind of weird. And the average class size is at 10.6, they have that at the lower 25%, but that's a lower 25% of the state has 10.6 students.
So, so when it comes to the in-school suspension rate, are we talking about where in the top 25%? Like, that's a high.
That's not high, that, you see what I mean? So the 3.9 is a, a good number, the top part, the, the state only has 3.9%.
It's, and I understand what you're saying, it's weird that they've switched.
It is.
It's the violence and class size, but not, you know, they're negative.
It should be flipped.
But you're saying that generally speaking, that's a low incidence of in-school suspension.
Okay, so then you have the financial thing, and then, uh, the academic growth. The, uh, ELA growth is at the 57%, that's the top 25% of the state.
So what does CS move to find?
That information is another place in their website. This is from the state website.
Yeah.
Well, no, these figures are available on another part of.
Yeah, yeah, on the other one.
Part of the website, it's just not in here. I think there's the oldest to include all that, those numbers in a section of the state reporting, because this is where the default from.
And then your math growth is at 55%, which is the average within the, above average across the state.
Do they not track science growth?
I'm sorry, what did?
Do they not track science growth in the same way that they track the math?
No, because you only have a, a couple of grades that do the science, so they didn't, they didn't track down.
Right, so science, the, the New Hampshire State Assessment, grade five takes science, grade eight and grade 11. And so in order to measure growth, they have to have those tests in consecutive years, which science doesn't fall into that category.
And this is fourth through eight.
Right, so, so grade three, they start taking the New Hampshire SAS test. Uh, but there's no growth there because they didn't take it as second graders, so that first growth point begins in fourth.
Right, no data for that. Okay, so and then your college and career readiness, uh, has a dropout rate, the five-year graduation, the four-year graduation rate and post-secondary, again a CS. The next chart is your proficiency, I've said proficiency over time. So what this. Shows is for ELA, the proficiency has grown over a three-year period. So hasn't your math proficiency. Your science seems to be staying about the same. But that's over a three-year period, and then down below gives you the actual percentages.
So the state number is the state average? Or, or that's an aggregate of?
That's just, that state, no, that state number is just telling you across the state, yeah, probably the average, the average score that everyone's.
So if you take every student in New Hampshire that has taken the test. Put their scores together, the average score is, not the average score. The average proficiency, proficiency rate, meaning scoring a three or a four on the test is at 52%. Um, currently, that was in 2021, in 2022 it went, uh, went down to 51 and then back up to 52% this past spring. And then they would, district numbers sit above that.
So the science proficiency number wrong, so that 31%. The state average is 37, but we, that 31 is within the 50% of the schools that.
Correct. On the next one, and your academic growth. Uh, these numbers are at, uh, like, at 57, so the overall. And then it, it went, just broke it up into the different grade levels. And the only one that was a little bit below the average was 47, but it's still considered average because it's within the range of. But the rest went up pretty well.
Yeah, so to elaborate just a little bit on these growth percentiles, what they do is they take, so. For example, all the third graders that scored at one of those four levels that fall on the test. And then what they do is they compare them this year to how they did, to the, all of the, the kids in the same academic area. From the year prior and they measured growth that way, so the fifth, that dotted line sits at 50%. Right, and that would be the, kind of the, a typical student that took the test, moved that much. So that, so if they're to the right of the line, it means that they've actually grown more on this particular assessment. Than the average student that falls within their academic range, if they're to the left of the line, they didn't quite achieve the growth. Of that, that typical student when they compare in that manner.
How big is the fourth grade classroom? How big is the fourth grade classroom now?
22. This year's fourth grade?
Yeah, and this, this number is the current student?
This is last year's, so just, so, correct, so the, the fourth grade data on here is this year's current fifth grade.
Okay, so that's the 22 students.
Yeah, so spring of 23, and then this year and next year's data will be the spring of this, this week.
So, so 57. Point growth, or 57% growth rate is in the top 25% of all schools in the state that way? That's what the first page is telling us. On the academic growth.
For the academic growth.
So we're, so we're, we're at least doing better in that regard in ELA than 75% of the schools in the state. So that's, that number is excellent.
And the other one reads the same, not saying numbers, but the, the same process, the academic growth.
The math.
Math.
So again, as a district, we're just above. That 50th percent mark in terms of growth. Some grade levels. Uh, you know, achieved higher, grew more than others, uh, but that's our kind of our composite score when, when you pull them together.
So beyond that first page where it sort of gives us that, that range, do we know what the state percentage is, like? Across the state for the, for the growth numbers? I know we, we just have that, that sort of first. But I, I don't, I don't see any. Because this puts us, this puts us in, in the, in the mid-range, right, for, for mathematics. It would be nice to know like where on the, you know, because that's kind of a drop, yeah, we're down towards the 30th percentile rather than the 75th, you know, that'd be nice to know where we're.
I can get you those.
Okay, the next one is the New Hampshire SAS. And just that first colored chart is just giving you the, the levels and, and what words they use to measure. So your blue is your high, high proficiency, green is proficient, yellow is your approaching proficient, and then below proficient. And then Jason's going to go with the, go in with the, um, now we're getting down to the grades. Individual grades, you're going to be talking about now, not the whole school population.
Yes, so, so again, as Dr. McGann said, just kind of that page with the colors, just to give you the kind of the terminology that you would see if you're a parent in the district. Um, you see these reports at the end of the year, um, you know, and it kind of tells you where, either online or, or the printed copy. And what happens is you get to see kind of where your students scored in math and, uh, ELA. And then potentially in science, depending on the grade level, and it gives a, a bigger description there. But in terms of terminology for the New Hampshire State Assessments, um, those are kind of the terms that we, we work with. Um, so the next page does just give kind of a snapshot at the elementary level. So this is taking students that took, so for example, for ELA, that is all of our third, fourth and fifth graders combined. Um, and what we can do is, so what we have there is, um, you know, kind of looking at 40, you know, that ELA for last year. Our three through five students did achieve, um, 46% of them achieved proficient or better. On, so that's the achievement piece on the assessment. Uh, math, you can see 52, and then science, you can see 46 there. And then when you take those and you compare that proficiency, the proficiency data. Um, what we get, what we do is when you break it out into the grade levels, we have the state data there by grade level. And you can see that in that first picture, we have for our third grade, 32% of our students achieved proficient or better. The state average is down below, it's 52%. So they didn't, they didn't, um, fall in line with that grade level. Um, you know, that average across the straight, uh, the state. And math, they scored, earned, um, you know, 63% of our students scored proficient or better, the state average in math is 42. And then we have the fourth grade and fifth grade data there, with the fifth grade, um, also including science, because that's the first year that that is assessed there. So this doesn't give the cumulative state, uh, state data, but it does give kind of the breakdowns when we compare up the grade level cohort to student. And then the next page just goes on to detail the middle school. In a similar fashion. Uh, with the corresponding page showing. Showing the, the state data as well. For each grade level.
How's someone's grade seven ELA?
Oh, so yeah, it's not colored in, it's actually a question that we were kicking around and trying to figure out. Um, but grade level seven ELA actually scored greater than 90%, I think it was like 91 or 92, which is accurate. Um, the way that they, the graphic isn't colored in on their site, so this is just pulled off that, the similar site that we looked at earlier. So, but yeah, I know they were, uh. Yeah, 90, I think it was 91 and change percent that they scored three or four.
So. Um, so just trying to read this graph, so grade six. English, you know, ELA, grade six achieved a 60?
60% of them achieved proficient or better.
Right, and then the state average is 53.
Yep.
But the target.
Yeah.
Proficiency was 64.
We actually have a question into the state about how they determine that line, whether it was arbitrary, whether it was based off of something else, and we haven't gotten that response back yet.
Well, it's obviously not terribly targeted, this is the exact same for every category, for every grade. Which, yeah. Based on at least the middle school, uh, it looks like we're seeing the state averages and everything except for eighth grade science. For proficiency levels.
And then the, the last page there is just the science for the high school, again, they don't, in, in, uh, you know, high school, they take the New Hampshire SAS for science only in grade 11. Um, and they take the SATs for. Um, the, the reading component and the reading, writing and then the math piece.
Uh, so what they say right on the state page on that?
And then the, the next several sheets are just the hard data that kind of goes along in there. It shows the cohorts of kids as they travel through, um, so you know, if you, you look at that, if you have questions tonight or questions in the future, but. Wanted to report that because I know that's something that you've seen over the years.
Big grade blocks.
Yeah. Yeah, and then you're after the test of Oxydol and. So, but that's what the next, the next couple are, and it's just broken out by, you know, the different, uh, you know, you got math, you got ELA, and then you got science later.
This is interesting that, to look at the data, skipping that COVID year. Really, there was only one group that saw like a decline over that two-year period, the rest of it makes a solid improvement, which is. Good to see, or, or.
Yeah, and, and these are the percentages of students that, that scored a three or, you know.
Yeah, a three or a four in the SAS data. So again, that's proficient or better.
As we kind of move forward, we get into our NWA data, which is our, the first, the best assessment that we do. Um, you know, multiple times a year to check for growth. Uh, and this, this scale's a little bit different, which I have on that opening page. Um, in terms of how they score their assessment, um, just a couple of things about the NWA, if you're not familiar with it. It is a test, um, it is an assessment that's given across the country, so it's not just a New Hampshire normed, it's, it's really. The norms get updated every five or so years around the, based upon all the data that they're getting for input from all the schools that participated. And there's over 15,000 schools that use NWA data, uh, and use that assessment piece. Uh, it's an adaptive assessment, meaning if students get in questions wrong, it gets a little bit easier. Students are knocking it out of the park, it gets a little more difficult, and it really. Um, helps kind of norm the test to who they are as a learner in terms of what, where their knowledge base is. And then what happens is it picks up there the next time around when they log in. So at the elementary level, we are getting ready to do the mid-year kind of benchmarks. Uh, over the next several weeks leading up to fifth grade break. Um, in terms of scoring, you can see the scale there, uh, really what we're looking at is average and higher in terms of kind of a, a relative comparison point. Uh, when we look at the proficiency piece, check to the New Hampshire SAS, uh, you know, the, so we're looking at yellow, greens and blues, it's kind of the focus. Um, you know, when we have those orange and red scores, those are the ones that we're looking at in terms of how do we support and drive what we do next.
Are those numbers on the right, just the raw number of students that, that we're talking about in each category?
Uh, working at the next page, correct, is that?
No, the.
Are you, yes, okay, yes, so, yep, so when you look at that, again, this is that 20,000-foot view, looking at every student that has taken the NWA. Over the last year, I say over the last year, last year, um, in terms of, uh, K through, and I say 12. There is a little bit of data on 12, but usually it's grade 11 is what, last piece where they take that data. And what we have there is we have the percentages on the left, we have kind of the bars that kind of show how they performed, uh, on the right. And then that's the raw number of kids, yeah, like you said. And then I just put the percentage that fits in that yellow, green or blue. In the middle of the box to help make calculations easier for, for me tonight, so. Um, so in terms of math, when we look at the entire school district, we're looking at about 58.3% of our kids that fit. Or scored within that average or better range, and you can see it for reading, um, language and then. Science.
Do we have any? Data on? What the, like, this is a national test, like, what, what the average is, what should we be looking at as like? An acceptable number for this, you know, is 64 good, is 89 good?
Like, in terms of where our percent falls within other schools?
Yeah, I mean, it's sort of hard for us to sort of wrap our heads around this data without really having anything to compare to.
Yeah, I mean, our, our goal for all of our students is to be able to achieve a meta or higher, uh. My knowledge, and I could look into it, I, I don't think that they compare them like that, but it's, it's like the local New Hampshire State Assessment does in terms of like. Kids in Montana score this range, you know, this, this is their percentage or better. Something I can look into further, but I haven't stumbled across that.
Yeah, and, and not necessarily a specific state by state, but, you know, with this assessing of other, so, local data. We have a, okay, this is, this is how schools in our state are performing, this is how our school's performing, okay, we can get a good sense of. Are we doing better, are we doing worse, or where, where do we need to target? This doesn't really give us much of a, I mean, obviously we want everybody to do proficient.
Yeah.
I think that ultimately, uh, that, you know, that may not be an, an achievable goal. We're not going to get every student in the district every time taking this test to be perfect, right? So what's an acceptable, what, what is the acceptable, or what's, what's the target for, for this testing, these averages?
Yeah, and we've talked a little bit about it as an administrative team, just about this, and, you know, I mean, there are districts, and, and again, I can't speak for the NWA piece, because a lot of that isn't. Published and shared between districts, the way the New Hampshire SAS is kind of comes together on that one website where you can search. Any school, any district in the state to get their data, you know, but, but realistically, it's, you know, I mean, we're looking at. There's no reason why we can't here have students, you know, 65, 70, 75% in those levels, you know, in terms of achievement. You know, I mean, I think we're, we're in a good spot, and I, but I think we always want to kind of continue to push that envelope so we can support students, so, you know. These are, these are solid.
Yeah, I, I mean, I mean, I would, you know, we want to try to get them as high as we can, and 70, 75, there are districts out there and schools out there that do perform. And like the New Hampshire State Assessment at those levels, and there's no reason why we can't. Continue to work towards those numbers. I'm assuming, so this is 20.3 data? Do you have 20.2 and 20.1?
Yeah.
I mean, even if we don't have other schools.
Yeah, yeah, I see where we're at.
Yeah, yeah, no, we can definitely look at that. The other, the other thing I had a question about was, you know, grading, science, you know, we're. We're sort of well below average in proficiency on the SAS.
Yep.
We are 89% proficient on NWA. What, where, what's a more valid benchmark for us? You know, one says we're doing great, the other one says we're doing pretty poorly.
We're going by the grade.
What's that?
We're going by the grade.
Well, I mean, I'd love for that to be the case, but I, you know, obviously, we want to look at everything that's, that might be open to us. I know, it was just. Wait, is that, you said that it's, uh, adaptive learning? Is that the major difference between the two?
I mean, that, that's definitely a, a big difference between that.
I mean, it could be the types of questions that are asked, you know, be the way the question is asked.
Sometimes it also depends.
I find it more than one.
And in the content area, you know, because so like science is broken down into kind of ma, three major strands, you know, you've got your life, you've got your earth, you've got the physical. Space, and on the SAS, it kind of depends on what, what those questions come up with, and sometimes kids have stronger backgrounds than what it for the other. And it's not that we don't teach all three strands, but, you know, with the New Hampshire SAS, it's also a three-year window, since they've learned some of that information. When you think about, they take it in fifth grade, then they go through sixth grade, and seventh grade science, and then they take it at the end of eighth grade. Versus taking it from sixth grade to seventh grade to eighth grade. So.
When you do so many different evaluations, and so many different testing styles and materials and stuff. It seems like it's impossible to target our instruction to these tests in any meaningful way. And I know that we've had some improvements recent, you know, upgrades to some of the. Language art materials and the mathematics materials and, um. You know, and, and maybe it worked, that really is working on for the NWA assessment, but, you know, is it working for all three or? Let's just, we're looking at, it just seems like it's, that's going to be, it's not something that you can like. Target all three of them and make sure that we're running everything, for all three assessments.
Well, and again, you know, these, these are snapshots, these are all given on a day at one point in time. You know, so it, it, it's really important to take, you know, any of these singular day pieces of data. And then look at what goes on in the classroom too, in terms of report, part of achievement, looking at how kids do in assessments within the classroom as well. And then use that to kind of triangulate that path forward, you know? Um, and NWA does, you know, every student gets an individual score. And they actually give you suggestions about skills that they should be developing, they should be maintaining, things that should be introduced to them. The teachers and, you know, staff are using to help tailor programs and what's going on within the classroom, you know, for each kid.
I mean, these are, these are the scores, but, but like, uh, Jason said, when you, when they, the classrooms dig deeper, they get into the actual skills. That need to be, you know, that are lost, you know.
So do you get feedback from these tests on an individual level, like per student, to say like, this student appears to be struggling in this particular area?
You get like a diagnostic report.
For each student.
For each student, so that's the, yeah.
His parents get that, right?
You, you get a snapshot in the error report, but you know, I'm, I mean, I'm more than happy, I mean, you can turn out those individual reports for all of you.
Is it this, just the SAS though, not this, do we get these too?
The NWA.
Yeah.
It's quite the rabbit.
It sure is. It is, it is for sure. Um, and then the next couple of pages is just taking that NWA data and just giving the snapshots of the, kind of the upper level, you know, the, the levels of each building. In terms of student, number of students that perform, again, average. in terms of student, number of students that perform, again, average or above that yellow, that green, and that blue material. And then after that is where it dives into how kids did at each grade level. Sorry, I know thirty pictures for those last couple of slides, but.
And you, so, this would be nice to see what this looks like on a year-to-year basis, so, you know how they, you have a color-coded thing there? You have that, then?
I, this, that, this, that report itself is relatively new, so it only go back, it only goes back three years, but yes, I can access that for the last.
That might be helpful to see. Your point about this being a taken on a, a specific days, point in time. You know, taken without that context, right, you can, anyone that just picks this up or views it is like, oh, this is how our school performed. And I almost were thinking, you know, this document is, it's made public, but there's a this test was conducted on X date or over the course of X dates, it gives some perspective about, about that in fact, because again, this is a, you know, overview for 2023, 24, well, it is, but it was taken on X day. I took my SATs and whatever time on, you know, whatever date, and I scored like, you know, what it is. When you put it into the graphs and you're, and you're making these broader determinations or data points, it's, it's easy to lump them in as a, as a whole year, not a specific day. Yeah, for sure. Yeah, it's also for me, just looking at the data, it's hard to really understand where, where this, where we are generally, it doesn't really give us much of a, um, this particular, the NWA stuff, where we don't really have those benchmarks that like, okay, what we consider, you know, what the Department of Education is considering an accepted performance school, an excellent school, a terrible school, you know, these are, these are where you should be shooting for. You know, it's hard to, it's hard to sort of interpret it. And then, and because you look at a number like on the SAS testing, 31 or 33% of the proficiency, it's like, well, that sounds pretty bad, but then when you look at that statewide, we're seeing, it puts that into the context, it makes it easier to understand that, okay, we have, there's certainly improvement there, but we're not, you know, we're not.
You know, below.
Well, not, but not just that, we're just not, you know, we're, we're doing, we're, we're, that's what everybody sees, you know, and that's, that makes, that's important for people to know, I think. Yeah.
So do we change our testing? Is this something that's required? Because I mean, if it's not what, due to some information?
Well, I think it is, I think it, once you, once you aggregate it, it makes it a little bit more difficult to understand. Once you have a student by student, you know exactly what to focus on with that particular student, but when you, when you start aggregating, especially with a small school size, you get limited sampling and you get, you know, one or two students having, having a bad day, or not getting enough sleep that night, can skew data in a meaningful way.
Having a really good day and guessing.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, and then, yeah.
But it, right, it goes both ways.
Right, absolutely, and so, so you have, there's a number of things that come together that make the, the broader data a little less valuable, but when you look at it on a student by student basis, if you can identify the patterns of where they're struggling and need extra assistance, that's, that's a good thing.
Although science scores specifically from the state to the NWA, there's such a drastic
Yeah.
difference there.
Well, the, I think the only way to look at that is it must be just completely different materials, I mean, they must be testing on different subjects. Are these tied at all to like, online course standards? Are we talking about like?
The state is, yeah.
The state is, is, is the NWA stuff, or we're talking about like a completely different set of benchmarks or standards?
I mean, it's, it's, it's same content.
Yeah, yeah, same content, like I said, it, it, it really depends on the approach in which the assessment is written, you know, there are different words used, and, you know, that makes a big difference on the understanding of students' understanding of the question.
There's so much research about question making, question asking. And I think, when I look at data even for my school, you have to remember that the numbers are not the whole story of your school. It's a part of the story, right? It gives you a snapshot of one day of student achievement, sure, but that doesn't mean it, it means something, but it doesn't mean everything, I guess. Um, it's easy to look at the numbers and the colors and get lost, but it's, it's very inhuman too. So we have to remember that, that part.
Yeah, and there's specific things that the board wants, I mean, I can go back and find other info, I can pull different things together, make it look different. Maybe we want to make it useful, we want it, as friendly as possible.
Well, I, I think it's helpful that I have two two sets of data here, because, you know, you see, you know, you look at one and all of a sudden your alarm bells or accolades in one, and then echo the others, well, well, that's, that's not what we're seeing over here, so it gives you an additional lead point for the educational sector, for what, what is happening here.
Right.
For people not the experts on the topic. I think it provides you other side of the coin.
Yep.
Is this NWA data a year behind the SAS data? A year behind?
This is 22, 23, same as SAS.
So the, so the, so the third grade in the NWA data is the third grade in the SAS?
Yes.
And then it looks like, and maybe I'm reading this wrong, but on the, on these charts here, there's percentages on the, on the far left.
Yep.
Like there's a percentile range.
Yep.
What is that, what is that, what is that in relation to?
So that, that's, that's, so if you were to take where kids scored within their percentile, it's a mean, it's an average of where each individual fell on that continual average together.
So I think it's like.
So like, if I were to take all, you know, 18 kids in grade one on this, even, there's no kids here, there's no individual scores here, there's no individual dot showing which percentage they got. But if I took those and just calculated the average, that's where that, that, that cohort would fall in terms of an achievement level.
Okay, so that's not really, so that percent, percentile is not related to any outside that?
The last couple of pages that deal with the NWA are pertaining to growth in terms of, so with NWA, where it keeps that, that memory of where the student left off, it makes a projected growth for the following year, and it depends on their score, it depends on which level they fall into, depends on a lot of different factors. And then what this chart, what these different charts are showing is the observed growth, meaning the results of the actual tests in those different grade levels, and what they, what NWA, based off of all the data input that they have, project students to be at. So for second grade, you know, and you've got a little bit of that, second grade outperformed the projected, please said again, that's all off of data and stuff that they've crunched as a part of their system. On grade three, did not. And then you have those different pieces from different areas.
Again, this is all based on our local data?
Yep.
What is the vertical part of this?
How many points they grow, so, for example, I'm not completely making this up, if I scored in the, uh, the fall last year, you know, a 200, for lack of a better number, which is, you know, and I grew, you know, I would be projected to grow X number of points, that's what that vertical scale is showing. Kind of, you know, in terms of how many points on average a student grew within that particular grade level. The last page is just, there's a few there. Yeah, I know, it's a lot of the information that's again, um, it's a lot to look at, it's, I know last year, when I mean, I was sitting here, I don't know, this is, it's, it's a kind of take it all at once. You know, so I would encourage, I would want to ask you to take some time to, we'll, we'll, if you have questions, like, pick it up, what, you know, more than willing, we can, we can sit, we can go through more information, we can dive in even further. Um, you know, and again, for everyone, I can put out kind of what those individual report looks, looks like that, that teachers have access to, to be able to kind of create stuff for students as well. Um, you know, it is just a snapshot with any of this. Um, and, yeah, we always want to look at those three points of data, but ultimately, we, we try to look at this and make those educational decisions to support kids and, you know, as, as you see in a lot of this, there has been a period of negative growth, you know, kind of over the last year, school year, and that's, I'm, I'm pretty, like, we kids moving in that positive direction, whether they're starting at proficient or average, or they're above it, or they're below it, it's all about getting them to kind of move the needle in that positive direction, so.
Is this public, or is it made available public?
It's in the nation's public, yeah.
Uh, just to kind of cover.
Yep.
Say, all right.
Give me balance of the logo.
I, who are you to start that now? Major, that it's all beyond the agenda, I'll put that on the agenda panel of this. Things are always sort of like helpful, uh, but also, you know, a little not helpful, because, yeah, when you, it's just difficult when you get one test that says, you know, maybe we need, we, we need some improvement in one area, and then the other test says we have 90% of the students in a better, you know, it's a.
Also, when we go through the testing, uh, and I, and I know I keep repeating myself, there's different approaches, there's different words, there's different, and one perfect example is the one where you see the third grade goes way down low, and second grade is up high, I think it's a NWA's. So you will be second grade, uh, score is really high, and then you're, you're, um, your third grade went down. Okay, a perfect example, okay, that sounds weird, that's really weird, that you have that much discrepancy. And we went back and found out in second grade, the test was read to them, but in third grade was the first time they had to read the test. Simple thing like that, and throw off numbers. So when we go through it, we have to say, okay, don't forget, that's the one where, you know, they first started taking the test themselves, by themselves, with no help at all, you know, so it makes a difference. Then, then it's like, what are you measuring? Are you measuring the knowledge they really have?
Vocabulary or.
Right. All the things are being mixed in there, so, you know, the test's not perfect either, you know. I mean, a lot has to do with practicing test-taking as you would with anything, anything. Next is the literacy leadership team, uh, it is going for, it's like some information that, you know, the program that these teachers are going through, with Mary's study in itself, is the science of, of teaching reading, so.
Yes, thank you for letting us be here with you this evening. I can relate to the chair's comments about multiple data sets and how confusing it can be and how you can go down one road, so we embarked in a, on a journey to really understand what the structure that we see in our school looks like, and understanding it's more than test scores, it's what we do with the students, the information, the curriculum we select, um, how we provide training, so we were able to join something called Letters, which is, um, based on the science of reading, and it looks at seven COGS of a good literacy program in the school. And as you can see on the page, page one overview, we pulled a group together and, um, did a self-assessment of our literacy program in those seven COGS, and that was self-reflection, and then getting into, um, small groups over about five session uh, to validate our, um, our reflection along with, um, building consensus around that, and then reflecting and writing a report and, uh, landing where we are today. Um, so I just, I'm going to just go over how the report's set up so you can read it, um, as you, um, later tonight, when you get home. Because I know you have nothing else to do. Um, so the first part, part is universal literacy instruction, are we using a curriculum that meets, um, all kids' needs? And are we putting enough time away in our schedule and scheduling kids into literacy and math blocks? So the team, um, rates up 10, uh, rates on several questions, and the response is either it's fully in place, you get two points, or one point, it's partially in place, or zero points. So if you look at literacy instruction, this team said, average, we have stuff in place, we're not fully in place with everything, but we have a little more in place, um, but we're not at 100% around our university, uh, universal literacy instruction. If you look at the average, the strengths, areas of strengths, those are the areas that the team felt that we were, um, had, uh, areas that we can continue to build off, areas to improve, one of the things is to review our data on a regular basis, some of the data that you're seeing and diving a little bit deeper into that. Um, and when it says other, just some of the literacy programs we're using under there, so you're aware that, um, we're using Horton Gillingham, Whit and Wisdom, Words Their Way, and Fontis and Penalt for the, uh, for literacy instruction. The next component around that is leadership, so it's not leadership necessarily, it's administration, it's do we have a leadership team around literacy? Um, and that, we kind of have some things in place, but nothing formalized the assessment said, so we did create one starting this past May, um, and we've been meeting on a fairly regular basis, um, around that, and email exchanges and looking at, um, that literacy data, uh, the things that we could, um, improve on, we felt in that area was uh, opening up the team to more people, maybe board members, some parents, um, and different people within our school community. Uh, the things that we felt that, um, we are doing well is that we are really taking a look at literacy and making sure it's embedded in everything and not just in the literacy block. When we look at assessment, um, we use a lot of assessments in the district, and are we using the right ones at the right time? And are they giving us the data we want? So you can see that, um, that is a strength, we have assessments, an area to improve is really defining what is a tier one instruction that every kid gets, how are we determining kids who need a little bit more, and those kids who really need that direct instruction? And formalizing that process across the district is an area we need to look at, and looking at, um, a predictable assessment schedule, and having that mapped out for the year, so we can say that we're assessing this skill on this day, and backing, backing up in our curriculum, did we even teach that at that time, and is that assessment even worth using? If we go into the next one is database decision-making, making sure that every decision we make. If we go into the next one is database decision making, making sure that every decision we make, that we can validate that and we can verify, and we can say that this is on a normed reference test or research base. We have staff members who are getting together on a regular basis to look at that, but one of the areas that's not included necessarily is Title I and sped, including in those data dives, so that's an area that we can easily improve on. And then just reviewing the rigor of our writing protocols, things have changed and advanced over time and going back and doing that reflective information, reflective dive. And then on literacy intervention instruction, that's, we know we have teams together to decide if kids need more assistance. But once again, that tier one, tier two, tier three, making sure those processes are formalized. And then we have the last two COGS is professional development. Although this looks well, I need to preface that there are lots of opportunities, and the staff feel we have all kinds of opportunities, professional development. However, it's not necessarily strategically outlined, it's not embedded on a day-to-day basis, there's not necessarily coaching. So that's why we brought the lead of us that is going to speak in a few minutes about some of the things we are doing to embed it and some of professional development they've already taken on because of this, this review that we've done. And then community and family involvement, we felt that the community here is very strong and very supportive, and that maybe we need to do a better job communicating out to our community of how we're doing, what we're doing. And so that's why that scored a little bit lower than we'd like to. On the last page summary scores, it just puts it all in one chart for you. Key highlights are the things I just spoke about. If we go to future planning and objectives, I'd like to bring you to five point O. We already talked about some of the challenge, some of the things we're doing this year, and we've already, we've gotten a grant around having demonstrated success come back and really dive deep into that data and say, do the questions even align? So when you've got an eighty-nine on this score, does it really reflect that in another assessment? Where are the gaps? And having that literacy team really do that reflective dives. And we have that, that starting, it started this month, but we're going to go all the way through to the summer to come up with a, a, a more in-depth plan of what we're going to be doing around selecting curriculum, how we're looking at our C I T, our tier one. So that's going to come out of those work groups. And I think that's one of the pieces that probably should be stressed the most, that everything is getting aligned and we're working through that process, so that way we have a clear picture of what literacy instruction in this school, district, K to five really looks like. But feel free to take a look at this assessment. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to anybody on the team, and we can walk you through it or reach out to me. But I wanted to, you to hear, instead of this high-level speak of all systems and buckets and all those things, what is it that we're actually doing? So I'm going to have Kristen and Paula come up and talk about some of the things they're actually doing and how that impacts students today.
Well, we embarked on that journey for letters training for teachers last year, the two-year program. So the, you know, it, it takes us about ten to fifteen hours a month to do all the online training, to add the readings, the, you have to take time to do what's called bridge to practice, and you actually implement some of what you learned in those sessions. And then for every unit, you have two live, three-hour classes with, with other people from all over the state of New Hampshire, from all over the state of New Hampshire. So that's, it's, it's, it's a commitment, you know, and to keep up with it is, can be challenging at times. But, but again, we're a team in doing it, and it's pretty cool. Last year, when I, so I've been in special education for over forty years and always worked with preschool through first or second grade. So it was foundational skills. I'm a, I'm, you know, really good at the phonemic awareness and, you know, sound symbol associations and all that kind of stuff. But now this year, I have not only K through two, preschool through two, but third and fourth graders. And teaching reading to children like that at that age, who have missed some of the foundational skills, or have language comprehension problems and things like that, was daunting. And so for me, having the opportunity to take this course, as I'm like, starting all over again, like a brand-new reading teacher. I'm like, oh, my gosh, that's why they do that. There you go, there you have it. So it really truly is, it's really been an eye-opener for me. Rules, you know, they start off the whole program by saying, you know, the English language isn't as unpredictable as you think it is. There's reasons for all of the reasons why we have these things. So you can tell the one little story, I taught a group that there is no, you know, the two letters that you'll never see as the end letter in an, in an English word, in the English language. Any guess?
The words cannot end.
They cannot end in these two letters.
If it's an English.
V. You'll never see a word that ends in V. So you've got have, give, love, they all have an E on the end of it, for that reason, the E doesn't do anything.
It's a placeholder.
You know, and it's just, we all tell kids, oh, an E on the end of a word will make that vowel a thong sound, or say its name. Not those words, because you can never see a word in the English language that ends in V, unless you have.
And G. And J, it's J. With the J sound, and it, that is the D G E sound at the end of it.
You have to spell it D G E if it's a short vowel sound, and if you have an E on the end of the word to make the vowel long, that's why G says the soft sound, cage, rage. Bridge, short vowel sound, you have have. The D is the placeholder to keep the vowel short, close it in, so like, it was.
Light bulbs went off. And so she had done a religious ed class, and we have, obviously, our students are in that class with her. And she's telling us the story of she, you know, they had extra time, I think, and she's telling them this, and some of the kids that you would expect, like, oh, they would know, no, they go, wow, that's great.
Go home and tell your.
Yeah, tell everybody, no. And so I would say it was like a month, at least a month later. And in fourth grade, we do a word that describes the night before, and then they have to explain and be able to explain why you can't talk about something other than that word kind of thing. So I don't exactly remember the word, but all of a sudden, I had a noise here, oh, wait a minute, it's a V, it can't end in a V, I have to add the E. And I was like, oh, my gosh, that carried over from a month ago, like, that doesn't always happen around, you know? That's great. And so it's just those little, like, rules and hints that we can give our kids that. If I had those, I would probably be the best seller in the world. But I tell our kids that I am not a great speller. It's a lot for me to read, you know, I grew up on the I A P, I had to struggle, and, which I think helps relate. The kids like, oh, okay, everybody struggles, you know? But I tell them, like, if I had these little hints that we're getting here, I said, this is like mind-blowing. And, and we're excited about, which obviously translates to the kids to be excited about it. And just the things that we're learning, I'm doing the letters training as well. The New Ha, and this is like, I don't know if it's a grant, that's a program grant, that the state of New Hampshire is trying to implement most teachers getting trained in the letters program. And so they put it out there that you could apply. I think we're on round three, but Paula and I joined it in round one. They pay, it is free to do this course. It's an expensive course, if the district had to pay their teachers, or pay for the course. I think it's a rather expensive course, and so they are giving this to teachers, and it was open to anybody. And so we started as the intervention role and special ed role. And then I think round two is when our admin, Mary and Jason and Judy, they did it. And now round three is starting next month, and our other elementary ed specialist teacher, Faith Bossy, is enrolling in that. So at least all intervention teachers in the elementary level will have been certified by the end of next school year, because it's a two-year program.
There are also other people who aren't in those roles who are participating in it also.
Yeah, so that's exciting, and we're thankful that we have been given that. I went into a new role this year, going into fourth and fifth grade, and I'm now kind of more in the fourth grade because it felt better and made more sense to travel with one group. And when I got into that role, I knew nothing, because I am typically a K three, really, except with the K one and the two group. I didn't really venture up this way to the elementary world and.
I wouldn't say you knew nothing.
Well, I didn't know nothing, no, I knew, but I didn't know the curriculum, it's a totally different curriculum than we're using in K two. It's a different world. And yes, it can help the strugglers, because that's still kind of, you know, in my world of expertise. But to really help the kids, I was like, I don't, I don't know what to do, like, I'm not sure, and I didn't know Whitten was dumb, and that was a learning curve. And so I talked with Mary and Jason and Peter, and I said, I need to do something, because I feel like I'm drowning, and I don't feel like I'm doing my best. And so we did, well, myself and Sally Nickel, we took a course in Orton Gillingham. I've already done an Orton Gillingham, it's called Orton Gillingham Plus, but that's basically your phonemic awareness, how the, your sounds, is a basic foundation level. Syllable division, all the criteria for fluency. I needed something more, and so I asked if I could do morphology, and I really didn't know what that word was about, and, oh, I learned. But it's prefixes and suffixes, it's base words, it's Latin words, it's Greek words. And it's how to dissect the words, so that when you're looking at it, one, you can read it, but two, you might not know what the word is, but based on your knowledge of a base word and prefixes and suffixes, you can take it apart and mix it up, and you might be able to figure out what that word is on the go. And it's been really quite life-changing as a teacher. And what's really neat is it matches up with the Whitten Wisdom curriculum, so right now, we're reading Love That Dog, it's a poetry book. And it's a lot, it, you know, you're really diving deep into these books. But at the beginning of it, it tells you all the prefixes, all the suffixes, and all the base words you're going to need to know that you may not know. And so what we do is for this fourth grade class especially, we have broken them into two groups, and then really, it's general, it's grouped up all levels, it's just picked, right? And we dissect those words. And so we had already started with prefixes and suffixes, and so now I've looked at what they're going to need to know, and we're working on the base words and the Latin words and the root words. And so they go into Whitten Wisdom now with Mrs. Nickel, and they're like, oh, we know that word, oh, we talked about, you know? So they're totally seeing that crossover. And one fun example, and it just happened right this morning, you know, when you're learning these new things, you start to see, like, oh, that's what they were talking about, oh, there it is, you know, you see all those things that are happening, like, right then and there. And one of the things I had a class on yesterday was vocabulary. And you really have to explicitly teach some of these words that you assume, because no, and they don't know it, or they're thinking of one meaning, and you're talking about a different meaning. And the perfect example was, we were doing benchmarking, which is a Fontis and Penel more testing. And you can't help the kids, you can't explain things to them, you just have to let it ride, right? So one of the kids, he read a book on tsunamis and these giant waves, the typical ocean waves that you're going to give up, crashing into the harbor, ruining devastation, right? He does great, he answers all the questions, he summarizes it, great, we're doing okay. Now we get into the next book, and that book is about sound. And that sound is waves and sound waves, and how they have to travel through your ear to get to the drum, to your eardrum, to then make connections to your brain. And all this child, as he's reading, could say was, how did all that water get into his ear? And I was like, oh, you don't say anything, and this is exactly what we just learned. And so I was like, just keep reading, just see if you can, and so see, but just do your best, buddy, just keep reading. We get to the questions, he couldn't answer a single question, because he was so focused on how this water got into this ear, but, you know, caused so much devastation on land, but now you have all that water in your, it was quite the nightmare of trying to. But it was so, like, perfectly seen, because now, and then afterwards, I'm like, obviously, I explained, okay, so if we had pre-taught this, I would have said, okay, so waves could be the ocean, but waves are also vibrations, and it's sound, and this and that. Can I reread it? Can now I understand it's not, and I was like, no, it's done, and we're going to move on. But it's just a really fun example to show you, like, take you back a step, and you're like, oh, yeah, no, I really have to work on that vocabulary and look at all the multiple meanings of words and stuff, so.
And like I said at the beginning, you know, it does, when you see a child make an error, or stumble, or not understand what they're reading, this has given us the background to say, I, I think I know why, and then you can really target that intervention. So, and then they, it's also embedded in all of the instruction, our tools and strategies. I mean, we started off the year, they, we have word reading surveys and spelling surveys, they're not the norm tests, but they're the ones that target where you start, I don't have to go all the way back to here, I can move on from there. So the tools that they end up with and the strategies, they show you ways to get to vocabulary, and it's really, really rich in terms of all of that. And I think the best thing about it is, it's not a curriculum, but you can take all of this stuff and apply it to whatever curriculum you're using. And that's, that's what makes it so valuable. So it doesn't matter whether you teach with Wisdom, Fontis and Penel, Scott Forsman. If you know all this stuff about how kids learn to read and why they do what they do, you can just start pulling the pieces out as they stumble in whatever curriculum they're working in, so.
And what's really cool about, I think, especially the letter. But the letters, it's, you can implement it as you go. You know, a lot of the curriculum or the trainings that you do, you have to make it through the whole training before you can really implement it and, like, get your feet wet. This, like, I mean, just like yesterday, we learned about vocabulary, and here I am the next day, like, all right, we're going to dive into this, I've got this, you know? And it just gives that confidence and, yeah, the strategies and the tests. Yeah.
Thank you so much for sharing with us.
Thank you.
So we're hoping to come back in a few months, we're going to redo this assessment and just see, based on some of the training, if we've moved the dial in some ways. But I actually wanted to end with some good news. I think the last time I was here, I spoke about some grants that we had applied for for drivers ed and for the music festival. And we did successfully get those grants from the Department of Ed. So we, I think it's about seven thousand dollars towards the music festival. So we'll have about fifty students go down to the Great East Music Festival, I think in New Jersey.
Springfield, Mass.
Springfield, Mass. And then we are able to offer driver's ed for ten students, completely free. And we're working with Precision Driving School to, you know, work on that contrast and make it and advertise it and get it out. So you will see that stuff this spring.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's great. So you were saying you're going to redo the, the assessment, the self-assessment?
Yeah, the self-assessment, I think one of the great things is having several people go through this, we're able to have those deep conversation and some pushback with each other. And when someone says something really high, or someone says something really low, we're able to come to consensus and agree. So I think the knowledge has been wonderful for all of us to engage in that. So we're going to do the self-assessment.
Yeah.
So.
This is sort of get a better sense of, like, where you're at in implementation and all. Yeah. Thank you. I think that is our, that's it for educational purposes.
Yeah, you wrote the approvals.
Yeah. Next up is the approval of the minutes from January tenth.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes.
Thanks, Joe. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Drive safe, it was like icy rain out there. All right, so any further discussion on the minutes? They are exhausted and. The loss, as usual. I didn't know I thought that much. What do you see tonight? Reading through it, I didn't know. All those in favor, six of them are saying I. Those opposed, sentience, and that cares. I do not receive any correspondence.
No, we just did get a, a letter, a notice from the town of Lincoln regarding subdivisions that are coming up, but they're not really connected to this particular area.
Well, it's in the butter.
Right, the butter's, and that's coming up February fourteenth, that meeting.
Is that a?
Mr. Joe's house.
Yeah. Both ways, there's two of them. Yeah. One on each side of the house. Nice. So Joe's on the butter, not necessarily. I was sort of on that same note. I can talk about that in a different part. So business administration report.
Yeah, we'll get into more of the budget stuff later, it just, we have manifests, and just one thing, we received a fourth round of supply chain assistance, which is money that helps our food service program. This money keeps coming out, and we apply for it, we got another ten thousand dollars. Again, it just helps the bottom line of our food service program, because it's just, you know, due to price increases or just availability of certain things and substitutions that we might need to make. It, it just really helps a lot, so we'll keep applying, and hopefully, every little bit helps.
Keep getting money.
Superintendent Street Ford, I do not have a report, however, all of the information will be.
Uh Superintendent Street Ford, I do not have a vote in support, however, all of the information will be um as we go through the agenda.
All right, Mr. Robert.
Uh nothing written this week, um but uh just a couple of things that I just wanted to share. Um we did receive a donation of five hundred dollars from Jesse over at Chaos Market um to go towards math and science stuff. Um to support what we do here. I know that we've received that in the past after talking with some people, but definitely a token of gratitude, we sent a letter and everything, but appreciated making that donation so that we can use that to fund some things um around school as we, as as needed in those areas. Let's see. Winter carnival at the uh, you know, the middle high school level is they're they're starting to to dip their toes in to get things planned and organized for that. That we acquired a vacation. Uh this week at this point is scheduled to be our final league of skiing. Our first three Fridays were fantastic. Got to kind of wait and see what happens with the weather Friday, if it clears up for us to go or not. Uh but it's been fantastic. The weather's been great this year. Uh you know, Lilo has done a great job over there in terms of making sure that with that snow, the instructors have been amazing. Our volunteers both from outside the school and inside the school have been amazing as well. For the students that stayed back and choose not to participate in skiing or snowboarding. You know, they've done sledding, they've done scavenger hunt prior to snow, they did outdoor scavenger hunt on premises. Last week they went over to Little Little Fitness and did yoga and some exercise and things like that. Um they're hoping to go ice skating Friday. Um again, just kind of depends on on what that looks like. So um that that is often running. And then really just um a couple of just more recognition pieces here. Uh Tamar Coed and his crew, um you know, with the weather that's been kind of present seemingly each week since break at various times, they've done an amazing job in terms of making sure the facility is ready to open in the morning. Uh things are clear through the night with all the basketball, uh you know, and and all the different uh organizations that use our facility. You know, they're definitely burning the candle at both ends um of the day and it's it's definitely appreciated. Um and then Sheila, uh who not only is our elementary admin assistant, but is also our sub coordinator. Um and then all of our staff and then our substitutes that have been super flexible in terms of how we cover things the last several weeks. There's been a lot of sickness going around that seems to linger. You know, we've had staff covering for other staff. Even during the free period, they're like, you know what? I can go jump in and help out there, whether it's a coverage release or studio.
Yes.
It's really bad out there. Like we couldn't make it to the driveway. It's the worst thing right now, but really you need to be very careful because it's bad.
Thank you.
Um so anyway, just in terms of that, just everyone's doing a fantastic job with all the duckling and things that gone on. I mean, we've had subs that have been planned, call out, we've had to find subs for subs. A lot of creativeness on Sheila's part, but flexibility across the board for everybody. So just wanted to recognize that here.
Great, thank you. We certainly, we definitely appreciate the lengths that people go to keep things running, especially when they get stuff like that.
Thank you. K F market too.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you or anything?
I I sent a lot of.
Oh, you're great. Thank you, Jesse. Very kind. Committee reports?
Uh you guys, you gotta vote on something tonight. I think you guys have a copy of this. That's the application for the.
Is this the original?
No, we said no to that.
Right, years ago.
Yeah.
Thought her name was Jody though, but.
Because this is New England craft, Arkeesian something. But they said they have up to a hundred booths and shows you a picture of the back and the back of that, the size of everything on the field. They say it is up to fifteen hundred participants, but with a hundred booths, that's fifteen people. For boot, there has to be more than fifteen hundred people across the three days.
Yeah, let's look at.
Yeah, I can't imagine that accurate, but anyway, we have to vote on it tonight to either say yay or nay or I know we said no to the people before, but.
This seems even more
Yeah, it is more.
difficult, even more damaging.
I I I feel like we're, we're spending a lot of money and we're, you know, every year to get, to keep our fields as good as possible. And they are, you know, I I feel like the backfield's coming around, the frontfield's coming around like I hate to I mean, it's, we don't really have like policy for a sake. Maybe we should develop a policy.
Correct. Your policy, the reason why it keeps coming to you and not we're going to the policies because the policy says that once they fill it out, it goes you know, something different than it goes to the board. If we can, then we're going to take the policy out and review it with the policy committee.
Yeah.
And just tweak it so that the pattern seems to be now that the board is invested in in the, you know, on the ground that you probably wouldn't want people to start, you know, using things. So so we can reword that so it doesn't have to keep coming to the board.
Yeah.
And then it will stop at the administration.
Yeah, and I, it's been a few years since the France erected the little yard sale prop, but there's a difference between that and
Oh, yeah.
the scale of what the what's proposing and I just.
There were no tents state being staked into the ground unless it was like, you know, called for detrimental rain. There's like two as opposed to, yeah. No, it's a way different, way different scope. And yeah, thousands of people compared to.
I mean, that that picture, that that picture looks like a whole.
That's a whole field.
Yeah.
So like for me now, that's a
That's a lot of traffic.
And by just, just putting these numbers on here is a gross misunderstanding of what is gonna actually go on.
Absolutely.
Have an idea.
Yeah, there's no way, there's it's.
I mean, a hundred booths with only fifteen hundred people, I mean.
Yeah.
That's crazy. I mean.
Busiest weekend of the entire year.
Yeah. Right, yeah.
This town sees.
And think about anytime you've walked through those craft fairs, there's quite a bunch of people there right then, right then.
I mean, I'll I'll say that I I would, I would not support this application. So I mean, I think we.
Yeah, I mean, we have to, we're supposed to vote on it.
Yeah.
But I mean, on the other, I, you know me, I'm always devil's advocate. I hate to tell the local businesses that because that's business to all these people that give us
Honestly.
Money and everything else.
Honestly, the way that businesses are so overwhelmed that weekend, I don't think that they're dying if we don't offer a craft fair.
No, I, well, I know. When, yes, because when they used to have the one across the street, they'd know lots and all of those businesses really were hurt by it. And then that's when they have to come over here and we said no.
Yeah.
But that was when that place was, say.
Yeah, but I, on the other hand, I mean, I am all for how much money we have put in these fields and I do not want to see them destroyed. I'm not saying I want them to be here. I just from the, I just want to stress for the business's point of view that we are sorry for not allowing it, but in my opinion, I hate to, I mean, it takes a lot of work to keep those fields.
Well, and people really don't understand the amount of money that goes into that maintenance.
No, and everybody says we'll be easy on them, but
No.
Moment, it just doesn't work.
Yeah, and if it rains.
Exactly.
You can't predict that.
And I was just thinking like that that weekend is so busy, no matter what happens.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Again, I feel that.
Yeah, I mean, I I guess I'm not sure that we can say, or or what's the, what's the motion?
Make some, make a motion to accept. The great New England Crafts Act even shows application to use, for the use of the field.
Okay, so that's the motion.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's good.
And so.
Can we second it?
I mean, if it doesn't get a second.
No second, I second it.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? And that motion is defeated. We should review that policy because I just think as a general rule, we, we shouldn't be having large scale non-school.
Uh I don't think it specifies on this one here. Yeah, Mark didn't specify on that.
Like what would be a price that you could say, say, okay, you can do it for fifty thousand dollars?
What's it cost to redo the whole front field?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. Well, we did that with the last people and they still. Yeah, they weren't, if you have quite a bit of money, and they were gonna pay fifteen hundred dollars.
We're spending north of twenty grand for our field maintenance. So.
Yeah, that's just maintenance, not destruction, right?
I mean, granted, that's just, well, it's not even applesucking, soccer's still going on.
Right, so what, Mr. Roberts said two weeks of sports after.
Yeah, so yeah. With the chance of losing the field to the kids too, I just don't see it myself. Yeah, I still have a couple. Over Christmas vacation, room one twenty-two, one twenty-six, which has science rooms, not Mr. Webster, the other two had their unit vents put in, the library one was put in. So I guess they got all working good air in there now. Uh February vacation coming up, the new multipurpose room, middle high school multipurpose room, air handler is going in. Um that's actually up in the, in the ceiling of the gym, so that's gonna be interesting.
You said that's over for February vacation?
Yeah, yeah, that one's going in then.
That's a big one.
Yeah, it is a big one. The one that's in there really isn't used that much. You you actually have to manually use that when it's so old, but the multipurpose room with the heat in the kitchens and everything else, it pretty much takes care of itself. Especially with the exhaust vents in the kitchen, it sucks all fresh air through there all the time, so it's really not that big of a deal. Uh warrant project for this summer. Uh it's not gonna be a warrant this year, so that uh Mark is gonna get, we have one bid, we're gonna get another bid. And we'll have to have public hearing on that once they come in. And that's really all that we have to bring to the board this way.
Yeah, thanks. Any other committee reports? The nominations, recommendations, resignations?
None.
School year calendar.
Yes, you have your school year calendar and your packet. And the L W A was um but what was, you know, discussed with the L W A and they did give some suggestions. However, the days of the count, the way this calendar is set up also went through the superintendent, South Country Superintendent, I mentioned this before. And we have two C T E programs that our students go to as well as the charter school. And they all changed their schedule so that they could start before Labor Day. And uh because they were missing all the kiddos that were in school and not getting any classes. So they started all of their calendars same as these. The only days we are off a little bit from them is the P D day in March, cause ours is March eleventh. There's another day, but ours is March eleventh because it's voting day. And your school is being used. So um we took that one, we took that one out. And so there were other, you know, areas where the C T E programs needed, you know, the scheduling, the way, the way it was so that we would all be in in sync with all of the other schools and the kids wouldn't be losing any instructional time from those programs.
That's all. This is all pretty consistent though, with what our normal, we normally do.
Yeah.
Start date's pretty normal.
There's definitely a longer Christmas break because of how it falls.
That's the jackpot Christmas break there. Lands on the right day that you get basically two full months off.
Well, the state also, the state, we look at the state calendar as well and superintendent's did too. So the state recommends coming back on January second and not wasting those two days coming back. So it gives that gradual in.
Yes.
You know, and then coming back into a whole week the following. Some people did recommend taking off the second and third as well, but it just adds on to your end of the year.
One thing that I was going to recommend, but now that I see we have three days off the next week, is a half day the Friday before. This year again was a little bit different because at Christmas Eve was Sunday or something. So that Friday, bu- by the Friday of the week before vacation week, when you're not coming back and and again, this this year is a little bit more heightened because Christmas Eve was literally two days later, but the, I like the students were completely checked out by Friday. I was going to suggest or ask what it would be to have a half day on Friday. Because again, like, I mean, there's no, the kids are frustrated, I have frustration from the teachers, frustration from parents. Me, me being a parent, obviously, you know, not frustrated, but everybody is checked out at that point. And so, and there's no instruction, there's no, it's all just, I'm sure there's instruction, but you know what I mean? Everybody is got a foot out the door. So I was gonna see what it would be to, you know, have a half day on a Friday, but if there's three days off the following week, I don't know that'd be necessarily.
Yeah, there, yeah, it is, it's quite a big chunk of time then.
Yeah.
I mean, but you add in the weekends and it's.
That's still, if you did a half a day, you'd still consider that.
It's still counts as. Right, well, that's why I was going to recommend it, because it's still a seat day. You're just dismissed at.
That's a lot.
That is a lot.
It's a lot.
Yeah, like I said, I mean, I was going to bring it up.
More time, though, we'll have to restart the curriculum.
I mean, it could be basketball games that Friday night, you're right, did the basketball start then? Better?
No.
December?
Yeah, there was a game.
We'll wait until a year that it ends up being like this, this past year again. Yeah, Christmas Eve was like the next day.
Right.
And it was just.
And you needed to. So do you wanna leave it the twentieth of August?
Yeah.
Or did you wanna go?
You know.
We're just in case it's games or something.
My only thought on that is that there's, there could be games, but also if it comes down to at some point where we're, where we're counting up hours because of days off, you know.
It could bite you later.
Yeah, we we may wanna have those. And where they're gonna have, I mean, it looks like when there's four days before Christmas.
Yeah. Yeah, it's definitely different.
Yeah, it's like twelve, it's like twelve straight days off.
Yeah.
And then two days back.
For the next time, but it's, I mean, this year we had.
Don't you mind how many emails you got this year?
That means the second and the third are like uh completely out.
With that, with the schedule the way it is, your last day is the twelfth, which is a Thursday. You know, and then you have five days added on to that.
So when would you schedule um graduation? Would it be the sixth?
It would be the fifth. Oh, sorry, six.
Yeah, and then continuation would be some of the tenth. That's good, that's pretty early. That's a nice change from Do we need action on this right now?
Uh it's up to you if you wanna do it now or you can do it at the next meeting, but if you're not gonna make any changes, do it now.
Cool.
Good, yeah.
All right. Then I'll accept the motion to uh approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five uh school calendar as proposed.
So moved.
Sergeant, it's Joe. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Close, extensions and that carries. Right. Nothing in new business. Continuing business?
Yeah, the strategic plan, as as I said at the last meeting, the merging i- is going well with the N E A's process with this strategic plan. Good to see.
Twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget?
Yeah, so B and C kind of go together. So I guess at the last meeting, you guys went through all the changes. So to to come to um a budget that we can now draft into and then discuss a few other warrant articles. So I think in your folder is just a two-page summary of the budget. And again, after the changes, the budget, the general fund before debt fund transfer was eight million five hundred sixty thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars or a one point six percent increase over the current year's budget. Um so with that, we can then go look at all of our warrant articles.
For some reason, I need to get a copy of the warrant articles.
They're in your.
I haven't had one, always, but that's okay. I'll share it.
They are attached, I can see them. Never mind. Let's just assume it wasn't Sharon that messed up that it was me. Solid assumption.
On two pages, it's short this year, which is nice.
Yeah.
Um so tonight, so you're, normally what you guys do is you'll vote, do a, your first vote on the warrant articles to be then, these will be presented at the budget hearing on the fourteenth. And then after the budget hearing, after any public input, you will do your final vote on the warrant articles. Um I just, I wanted to bring your intent. Um, I just, I wanted to bring your attention to. So yeah, the meeting is on March nineteenth. I wanted to bring your attention to Article Four, so Article Four is just a, a notice really to the public about the different salaries. For the different positions, the school district positions. And in, we had discussed, I think, in the budget binder, increasing some of the rates for the moderator. The ballot clerks, supervisors of the checklist. Because ours were, I think the moderator was ninety dollars a meeting, the ballot clerks were eighty and the checklist supervisors were.
I was gonna say, these, these are the upgrading numbers.
These, these are the upgraded numbers. I just wanna make sure you are okay with that. We did discuss that during the budget work session.
The, the only question I have is would these be, would these apply to the folks that work this year?
Yes, uh, no.
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 Right, because we voted last year to keep.
Yeah, what's in the budget?
Yeah, no, because the current year's budget is what last year.
So it would be next year?
Yeah, 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 that's right.
I ain't working.
Yeah, and we had looked at, you know, what Lincoln pays and what Woodstock pays.
I'm a troublemaker, I am, yeah.
Lincoln pays two hundred dollars a meeting and Woodstock pays fifteen dollars an hour. Their meetings are a little bit longer, because their voting period is a little bit longer than hers. But anyway, yes, this would be effective. Good question. So when people vote on that, that, that they're not really, it's just again a notice that the money for that article is in our regular operating budget. Article five. So when you look at Article five and you look at, again, I just gave you the summary. But Article five, it includes all of, you have to gross appropriate everything, all of our funds.
Yeah.
Except for any of our warrant articles. So when you look on that summary budget, you have the eight million, five hundred sixty thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars, which you voted on. Working on the budget, but then we have to add in. Our special funds, which are grants and and food service and all that. To bring us to that nine million dollar figure that you see in the warrant article. Most of the grants and the food service is offset by revenue, so your tax rate isn't affected by those. But we need to gross appropriate foods as much as possible. So that's why the number on the warrant is that nine million, three hundred thirty-five thousand, nine hundred ninety-one dollars. Still, again, when you explain it, it still represents a one point six percent in your operating budget.
Yep.
So that's where that number comes from. So that's your operating budget is Article five. Article six is your support staff contract. Discussed before, so the support staff contract, when you are presenting that to the public, we, it's a two-year contract. So we have to notice the public on the two years. Um, what they're voting on for next year is the first year's increase, one hundred and forty-one thousand. We're letting them know it's a two-year contract. And in year two, this would be your increase over and above. The first year. Um, so that is that article. Article seven is just if that happens to be defeated, we don't have to petition the court or anything to have special to.
Yeah.
But, you know, go back and look at that contract again.
Should that be a question mark at the end? Of Article seven?
Should it or shouldn't it be? Okay, well, I'll go back and check then. To press, show the district. Authorize and open it up. Um, these have also been reviewed by our attorney and they're currently being reviewed by Department of Revenue. But I wanted to wait till after this meeting tonight to give the final. Um, Article eight is for the Special Education Capital Reserve Fund, putting sixty thousand dollars into that fund. From the special education aid that we received as a reimbursement next year. Otherwise, it would just roll with surplus. Um, one thing, I did get a update from our attorney. This is something that DRA wants everyone to do. I have to add in. And you'll see on the, on the next draft, they, they want us to put in the years that these funds have been created. So it will read. Um, Special Education Capital Reserve Fund in the pre- parentheses, created in nineteen ninety-eight, amended in twenty twenty-one. Because that, we started out as a special education trust fund and then we amended it to a capital reserve. Just some housekeeping things that they have all the districts doing. Article nine, ten and eleven, I think, are the amounts that you voted at the last meeting to go into the facilities trust fund. The technology trust fund and the equipment trust fund, all coming from any surplus that we have this year. And again, I have to add in the dates for those, but the facilities trust fund was originally created in nineteen ninety-nine. Actually, they were all created in nineteen ninety-nine. So I just have to put in those dates. And that's it. That's what we have right now. The petition articles will due. February twelfth. So if anything comes in via petition, those will be added. To this.
So we need to approve.
Yeah, so you need to do, yeah.
Okay. Um, can we do that bulk? Or can we?
You can do it bulk as presented, for articles, whatever, one group.
Yep, with the, with the minor changes that you said regarding the dates. Yeah. I mean, I think. Does, is sort of poses question like. It's the only one that's worded that way, no?
And I took it from last year.
Yeah.
And the year before, so.
I don't know.
Um, all right, then I'll accept the motion to approve the warrant articles as presented with the. Uh, changes to include the dates on the uh funds. In articles, six, or eight, nine, ten and eleven. Thanks, Joe.
Second.
Thanks, Jasmine. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, extensions and that motion carries.
Very reasonable budget.
All right, um. And is that it? That's.
Yeah, that's it.
I, I have one issue uh that I just wanted to see if maybe the facilities committee had some thoughts on. Yeah, I, um, I think youth basketball game here this week where, where a student was injured. Um, uh, and ran into the wall, I guess. Uh, and I guess the question is, is this padding sufficient? I think that the, the child ended up with significant enough injuries that they ended up with the ER, so. Um, you know, we, if we have like young kids. Generating enough force to hit these walls and, you know, send themselves to hospital. You know, we, is that, i- is this padding sufficient, I guess, is the question. Yeah, and I, and I, I'd be honest with you, I don't know, because I wasn't here, whether it was he hit the wall. Side, Jason keep padding or the padding was, it was just not thick enough padding, but apparently it was a. Um, it was not a good scene, so. I don't know if that's something like to, you know, i- is that industry standard? Is that what like, you know, as far as like.
I would assume it would be.
School safety, yeah.
Based on standards, but I'm wondering if it would need to be any bigger.
If it, if it's a width issue or if it's a thickness issue. Either way, you know.
Looking.
Yeah, we'd like to.
But I, I thought they just sell them kind of as standard metal.
Right, yeah.
But does the NHIA help?
That or even Primax have.
Yeah, Primax.
Come in and just kind of give us some.
Yeah, we had the gym inspection, state inspection before, so I think that was part of them before, but they didn't do the gym inspection up here just then.
And they're looking at like the existence of padding at all or like, is that appropriate thickness or?
Yeah, well, exactly, like underneath the playground, you have to have such and such. It's all part of it, so I.
Yeah. I don't know, I just think, you know. When I was in school, we had a, we had a teacher who was sprinting and knocked himself unconscious in there. And I, but I can see that, a full grown adult sprinting, sort of tripping, but like a little kid. You know, that ran into the wall. Uh, sh- you know, the padding shouldn't handle that.
Yeah.
But we could just sort of maybe have Mark maybe at. See.
We'll get in touch with Primax and find out.
Yeah, if, if there is a standard, we're up to it, you know, accidents happen, so I know obviously that's might not be the, the, the cause, but just.
Well, you will try to avoid them.
Correct.
But anything, anytime something happens like that, yeah, it's good to.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and we. We, we put in this particular floor for that reason, because we had some kids hit their heads on that freaking carpet that was in here and that was a little. Concrete, yeah, and so I think, I think that was a nice upgrade, um, safety wise and uh we could. Yeah, anything we could do to prevent the. Anyone have any other, I don't see any.
I, I have to stack before.
Oh, you do.
I have to write up, so is Mr. Hagan still on?
He's still on.
All right, tell him to take good notes. So, uh, Mr. Hagan, um, just says, congratulations to all of our participants for the Poetry Out Loud competition last week. Dalton Lilick, uh, will move on to the regional finals, which is in February, on February fifteenth at Penn State. Blake Mossman is our alternate. Um, over twenty middle school students also participated in the night at the Woodstock Station. Uh, thank you again to our district, the band and Mr. Antresi are one of our music teachers. Uh, then all of our judges and all of our brave students and the Rice family for hosting the event. Uh, this is fifteen years in the making, so.
Thank you. All right. Um. We don't have any students or community here, so I would, um. We have none public. Do we have any non-public business?
I don't know if the one, you want to non-public now or do you want to do it on a different meeting?
Might as well do that. All right, then I'll call the board to go in non-public. Joe?
Yes.
Ashlyn?
Yeah.
Desmond?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we are in non-public.
Can we take some notes?